Hello, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivin- Hey, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, we're going to start tonight off with a proclamation. It is Veterans Month.
Hey, proclamation, whereas on the 11th of November, 1918, a temporary peace or armistice was signed in the fighting during World War I, came to an end. And whereas one year later, President Woodrow Wilson announced that November 11th would be called Armistice Day in the United States. And whereas in 1938, Armistice Day became a national federal holiday, a day dedicated to world peace and held in honor of the veterans of World War I. And whereas in 1954, Congress changed the day to Veterans Day to honor the veterans of all wars, including World War II and the Korean War. And whereas our nation's service members, past and present, represent the very best of America and serve at home and abroad with professionalism, integrity, and devotion. And whereas as of 2021, there were approximately 16.5 million veterans in the United States. Approximately 8 million veterans are over the age of 65, and approximately 2 million veterans are women. And whereas the veterans of foreign wars, Frank R. Vase Post Number 1263 and its auxiliary and American Legion Fred Hancock Post Number 9 and its auxiliary have been active members of the Renton Communities for decades. And whereas the holiday is a celebration to honor Americans, America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to sacrifice for the common good. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 2022 to be Veterans Month in the City of Renton. And I encourage all members of the community to acknowledge and honor the services, sacrifices, and contributions of veterans and what they do every day to support our country. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Van.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Council President McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, we're honored to have a number of veterans joining us today. But to accept the proclamation will be Martin Tamayo. Martin, we're gonna, we're gonna do a photo op here first. For us. Everyone can join us. You made the trip. Councilmember O'Halloran, I move, I'll send Councilmember Van, please.
I want to thanks everybody, all the city members, especially Ms. Kim. Thanks for all the support you have done for us. And we're looking forward to continue working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Renton Equity Commission and the Human Services Advisory Committee are currently recruiting youth members. The age range for the Equity Commission youth member is 18 to 25, and the Human Services Advisory Committee range is under 21 years of age. This is an excellent opportunity to learn about equity and inclusion, human services, local government, and volunteerism. Youth members are eligible to earn community service hours as well. First preview, excuse me, first review will be conducted November 15th, and applications will be accepted through 5:00 PM Wednesday, November 30th. The Human Services Advisory Committee also has three regular member vacancies. Committee members assist staff in developing policies designed to assist Renton residents and the community. The mayor, city council, and staff review its recommendations before making funding decisions on programs and projects. Oral interviews for all vacancies will be conducted in December. Interested applicants may apply for any of these positions by visiting our website at rentonwa.gov ampersand application. The next pop-up lunch will be held Tuesday, November 15th, from 12:00 to 1:30 PM at 300 Rainier Avenue North. Ready to eat lunch and drinks from Amazon Fresh. Personal hygiene kits, cleaning supplies, and socks will be available to those with food insecurities and/or are unsheltered. The last pop-up lunch of the year will take place at the same location on November 29th. The pop-up lunch events will be suspended for the month of December. The pop-up lunch events are sponsored by the Equity Housing and Human Services Department and the Emergency Feeding Program. Renton Technical College will be hosting an open house and tours program showcase on Tuesday, November 15th, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. Visit interactive program tables, talk to faculty, learn about career training and transfer options. This event is free and open to the community. For more information or to RSVP, contact outreach@rtc.edu or call 425-235-6353. Information about preventative street maintenance and traffic impact projects, road closures, and I-405 work happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov ampersand traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next, we have audience comment. When your name is called, please step up to the podium, give your name, city of residence, and items that you'd like to discuss. And you have three minutes. The first is Diane Dobson.
Thank you very much. Diane Dobson, City of Renton resident. I'm CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Chamber and Business Community. I want to extend sincere appreciation and thanks to all of you tonight for hearing the voices of the business community as you go into your legislative agenda vote tonight. Council President McGurven, I thank you for taking the time to not just sit with me, but to join us in two separate stakeholder meetings in which you heard from over 35 business representatives as to the challenges they are facing relating to crime and safety and their ability to effectively, efficiently, and safely do business here in the community. Councilmember Vaughn, I thank you for taking the extra efforts and energies you've put in not to just meet with our businesses where they are at, to hear those same struggles, but to venture out into our downtown Corrin on Rainier Avenue where we have particular challenges at all hours, including after dark, to see firsthand the increasing challenges and the situations upon our streets. Councilmember Perez, I thank you for the diligence with which you serve and lead the Public Safety Committee, working with our first responders to hear the issues and to come up with outside-the-box approach of solutions. Councilmember Alberston, I thank you for being a continued source for our business and for our community members to turn to with questions and ideas. You dig into all elements of approach to have a comprehensive understanding of current issues and approach and efforts from sitting with the police department, the courts, the attorneys, the nonprofits, and hearing the businesses. I thank you for always being a resource to hear me as well. Councilmember O'Halloran, I really appreciate, and you continue to impress me with that same diligence that Councilmember Alberston has in a thoroughness of diligence in digging into the matters at hand. Councilmember Prince, McGurven, and Rivera, I thank you in advance for your time tomorrow, that you're willing to sit with our legislative committee so they can better understand the approach of council and the legislative agenda. You're not free from thanks. Mayor Pavoni, I appreciate you and all of, all of your efforts at these times. Above all, I thank the council as a whole for hearing the business community, for taking the seriousness of approach with that legislative agenda tonight in providing the tools and resources for our police department to effectively do their jobs, to make this a welcoming environment for our City of Renton, for our community and our businesses, so we can continue to do our job at the Chamber of Commerce and have a welcoming environment to bring businesses into. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Joseph Smith.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Joseph Smith. I am actually a resident, a new resident here in the City of Renton. I am a Washington native, born and true, originally from Lacey, Washington, and attended the University of Washington. I'm here tonight just briefly to talk with you about an issue that my community has been facing. I represent the HOA, or Homeowners Association, for the Crystal Heights Community located at 821 Sunset Boulevard Northeast. Specifically over the last year or so, we've dealt with an uptick in terms of neighborhood traffic as it relates to folks walking their pets and dealing with owners who unfortunately haven't been willing enough to actually clean up after their pets. Now, I think all of you can agree, having a pet is a wonderful experience for many of us. It's a mental health welcoming path for better mental health, if you will. But I would say, in terms of kind of going through a process to resolve this with a few rowdy neighbors, if you will, that it doesn't really feel like there's a lot of options when engaging with the city on this. I've had multiple conversations with the Renton Police Department, and specifically Animal Control, in terms of kind of the review of the existing Renton Municipal Code, specifically Title VI, Chapter VI, Sections 661 through 6613. There doesn't really seem to be anything that indicates an actual responsibility of pet owners within the city limits as it relates to their responsibility with their pets in public places as well as on private property. And so I am asking, as just a request to this body, a review of the existing ordinances that are on the books for the purposes of clarifying the responsibility of all pet owners within the City of Renton, to hopefully make that a bit more clear for all owners, to ensure that there's a better path in terms of resolution when this does arise with other neighbors, and ultimately to ensure that there's a clearer understanding in terms of accountability and enforcement around that. So, thank you.
All right, well, next up, we have consent agenda. We have eight items. Are there any items that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I would move approval of the consent agenda minus item B. I'd like to pull item B just to facilitate any additional discussion as this was a carryover from our last committee of the whole. And if there's, unless there's any other items that any other council members want pulled.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince on line there, that the council approve the consent agenda item, minus item B. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Yes, Council President McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item was our, is our legislative agenda, as was called out during audience comment tonight. And I thought it merited the opportunity to be discussed as a separate item. Should there be any council members who have additional comments on it? We had a good discussion in our committee of the whole last week, and just want to make sure there obviously is that opportunity for discussion on this item. So with that, I will move approval of item B.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that we approve item B. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. That's my favorite.
I really appreciate the conversation. I appreciate Council President McGurven pulling this so we could have further discussion. I just want to be noted that none of the feedback that was provided at committee of the whole last week was actually, from what I can tell, introduced into this. It's pretty much the same document. And it doesn't seem right that we are still alluding that ESB 5476 is the uptick and the only uptick to increase criminal activity in our area, along with moving it from a voluntary approach to extortial intervention, hence walking us back on the war on drugs, which, what the Blake decision was trying to combat. So that's all I want to say, and I appreciate Council McGurven pulling this for the agenda.
Session. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, ayes have it. We are on to unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has 10 committee reports this evening.
All right, Finance Committee, committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment of $8,893,173.06 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and two wire transfers. And payroll, a total payment of $1,694,841.13 for 637 direct deposits and 10 checks. This is the October 1st through 15th pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for early implementation climate planning, climate planning grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce. This agreement is to accept $79,680 of non-matching grant funds to implement the electric vehicle infrastructure plan. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to say that this, this non-matching grant is directly a result of our staff going out and seeking these funds. And this is going to help us understand what we need to do to move closer to being an electric vehicle friendly city. Thank you.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Contracts for 2023. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the renewal of the fully insured health plan by Kaiser Permanente. Kaiser premium rates are increasing 5.82% for active employees and a slight decrease for retirees with Medicare coverage. Upon approval by the city, Kaiser will issue the updated plan document. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the Healthcare Management Administrators Health Contract for 2023. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Healthcare Management Administrators, HMA Administrative Services Agreement, and 2023 rates. The agreement has been updated to reflect compliance with healthcare regulations under the Transparency and Coverage and No Surprises Act. In addition, the total cost for HMA's administrative services is increasing by 3.6% for 2023. It will be $43.44 per employee per month. Enrollment varies during the year and is approximately 626, 560 active members and 66 retirees. That total cost over the 12-month period is approximately $329,573. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an approval of a memorandum of understanding with, or one of our labor unions. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ASME Language Translation Memorandum of Understanding, MOU. The proposed MOU would amend the contract and aims to provide a financial benefit to those staff who are currently providing language translation services as part of their work duties. The MOU will be effective, starting with the pay period, November 16th through 30th, 2022. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
This memorandum of understanding is to explore the possibility of compensating those of our employees who have voluntarily been providing language interpretation services during their day jobs. And so we want to take a look at maybe giving them a little financial incentive for, for doing that additional good work for our city and our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
If I may, I'd like to really appreciate staff and folks working on this because as someone who is bilingual or trilingual, I really see the need and the work that our staff, who's been providing translation and interpreting services outside of the scope of their work. And so it's really a way of us showing that we value your skillset. We value your lived experience, and so very much appreciated. Thank you very much, Chair.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment request from C Investments of Washington LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adjust customer account 031175-000 in the amount of $3,364.60 for excess consumption caused by a qualified waterline leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code 8446 and 8523. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment request for Linda Birch. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adjust customer account 051445-000 in the amount of $3,397.63 for excess consumption caused by a qualified waterline leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code 8446 and 8523. This too is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Guess what I'm gonna say? No. I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the Renton Middle Housing Project Grant Acceptance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce in the amount of $100,000 for the Renton Middle Housing Project. This project aims to initiate a work program to explore additional opportunities to allow duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and other middle housing types like cottage housing in Renton. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
The next report is regarding an amendment number two to a contract with Ogden Murphy Wallace P L L C. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve amendment number two to contract 19-342 with Ogden Murphy Wallace P L L C in the amount of $120,000 for additional legal services on behalf of the City of Renton. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
Okay, the final Finance Committee report is regarding an amendment to City Code for Bad Debt Write-Off. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code 343 for Bad Debt Write-Off. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the council concur with this final Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, signify, oh, any discussion? Just trying to rush through it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. That was a lot of work. All right, we are on to Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Planning Development Committee has a couple of committee reports.
Hey, the first Planning and Development Committee is regarding the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners 2023 Work Plan and Operating Budget. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution adopting the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, SKEP for short, 2023 Work Plan and 2023 Operating Budget. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur to Plan Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report of the night is regarding adoption of the 2018 International Fire Codes. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to adopt the 2018 International Fire Codes to ensure fire codes are consistent with the state adopted codes as listed in RCW 1927. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This too is signed by the committee and chairs, committee chair and members, sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur to Plan Development Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to legislation. We have two resolutions, two ordinances for first reading, and five ordinance for second and final reading.
The first resolution is regarding the 2023-2024 Fee Schedule. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton Fee Schedule for the years 2023 and 2024.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next resolution is regarding the Work Plan and Operating Budget for Skip, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners 2023 Work Plan and 2023 Operating Budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that council place this on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
All right, so resolution.
This is a resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
And I still second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the first ordinance for first reading is regarding the fire code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code as adopted and amended by the State Building Code, Council in Chapter 51-54A WAC, revising the city's amendments thereto in Sections 45070, the Renton Municipal Code, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Okay, now I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is also for first readings regarding bad debt write-off. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 343 of the Renton Municipal Code to authorize the finance department administrator to write off bad debt, providing severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Perez.
That's Councilmember O'Halloran.
What did I say?
Alberston. We could be twins.
All right, I'll start over again. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next five ordinances are for second and final reading tonight. The first one's regarding flood regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending flood regulations in subsections 43050G4D and 43050G4E of the Renton Municipal Code, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be adopted as read, and it takes a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes. All right, the next ordinance is regarding piped utility rates for 2023 and 2024. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 822G, section 823, subsection 8424A, sections 8431 and 8515 of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing piped utility rates for 2023 and 2024,